So, good afternoon colleagues. Can I ask you to take your seats please? And perhaps we can close the door? So, we will start with item four on environmental monitoring assessment and reporting. So, at our previous session, a special session in May, a representative of the secretariat informed the committee of the need to extend the mandate in terms of reference of the Joint Task Force on Environmental Statistics and Indicators until the end of 2023. The committee decided to address this matter in the current session. I would also like to recall that the current mandate in terms of reference of the Working Group on Environmental Monitoring and Assessment expires on 30th of June 2023. And as the committee's regular session is scheduled only for November 2023, an extension until the end of 2023 is also required for the mandate in terms of reference of the working group. We have here two problems. The mandates of these two groups expire before we have the meeting of the committee. Therefore, this is something that we need to solve. I would therefore invite the committee to endorse an extension of the mandates in terms of reference of the working group. You can find this extension in document ECE slash X slash 2017 slash L2 and annex to document ECE slash CEP slash AC dot 10 slash 2021 slash 4. This was for WGMA and now for the Joint Task Force. Until the end of 2023, the extension you can find in document ECE slash CEP slash S slash 2022 slash eight. So, this would allow the two bodies to present new draft mandates and not to have their mandates expire before we have the opportunity to decide whether or not to extend their mandates. Also, also, if you agree on this, that's what we will do. The committee approves this extension. And if the committee approves these two extensions, the extension of mandate of these two groups, they will be submitted, of course, for decision of EXCOM because it's EXCOM that needs to approve this. But before EXCOM approves, CEP needs to submit this, these two decisions to, to EXCOM. I would also invite the committee to consider allowing for further consultations on the possible establishment of a standing body on environmental statistics under the committee and the Conference of European Statisticians and supporting the proposal to seek additional resources to fulfill the expectations of the member states in the area of environmental statistics and indicators and to cover a wider geographical scope and emerging policy themes. Okay, so we have two proposals for extension of mandates until the end of 2023. And we have here a proposal for the committee to allow further consultations, further discussions on the possible establishment of a standing body on environmental statistics and the, our committee and the Conference of European Statisticians. On the extension of the mandate, if the committee agrees, we approve it and we send this extension until the end of 2023 for approval of EXCOM. So, the first subject. It seems that the committee agrees, thank you very much. Now, on the second sub, the second subject on the, yes, Switzerland was moving immediately and the European Union, I think you want to speak about the second or the first? The whole, the whole. So, the, the European Union wants to speak about the, the whole issue here. So, I will give the floor to the European Union first, Lukas, you have the floor, and then I will come back to this.
Thanks, Madam Chair. We will speak on the extensions and also on the, on the establishing of a standing body, if you allow. So, Madam Chair, the EU and its member states consider environmental monitoring assessment and reporting as an essential part of effective environmental policy. Reliable data coming from continuous environmental monitoring are indispensable if we are achieve the SDGs and adopt efficient database policies to improve the quality of the environment. It is even more relevant in the relatively new cross-cutting policy agendas that we will be tackling at the ninth EFE conference here in Nikosia. We recognize the importance of the activities carried out in the framework of Joint Task Force on Environmental Statistics and Indicators. We commend the work carried out since 2009, especially the revision of the indicators covered by the ECE guidelines for the application of environmental indicators endorsed in Belgrade and welcome the cooperation of the Joint Task Force with the Conference of European Statisticians and other bodies. The EU and its member states recognize the challenges faced by the ECE secretariat in terms of human resources and the challenges linked with the integration of traditional statistics and geospatial data. This and other tasks ahead of the Joint, Joint Task Force require a more stable platform that would go beyond the current form of a task force usually convened to resolve short-term issues, short-term issues. In this sense, we support the extension of the Joint Task Force mandate until the end of 2023. The Joint Task Force works closely with the Working Group on Monitoring and Environmental Assessment, whose mandate and terms of reference expire in November 2023. To allow the CEP to consider and approve these, we support the, also the extension of the mandate of the Working Group on Monitoring and Environmental Assessment until the end of 2023. At this stage, we would like to highlight the need for a more structured and focused approach to the future work of the Joint Task Force and Working Group. This is due to the latest policy developments in the EU which require substantial engagement of EU institutions in the implementation of the European Green Deal and Digital Agenda. For future work, we would also like to suggest that it be realized in a more streamlined way in relation, in relation to initiatives of participating organizations, namely the EEA and Ionet activities, UNEP initiatives and initiatives under the SDGs process. We also suggest that these activities will be conducted in close coordination with relevant organizations operating at the regional level in order to leverage the experience of the Joint Task Force and Working Group and limit duplication of work. This will certainly lead to the reduction of reporting burden and effective use of human and financial resources. The EU and its member states will remain engaged in environmental monitoring assessment and reporting activities in the UNEC region, and we wish to encourage all member states to do the same. This will add value and promote the importance of regional platforms for environmental and climate exchange, climate change, and will in turn support dialogue on any other critical challenges in the UNEC region. With regard to the suggestion to continue consultations on the possible establishment of a standing body on environmental statistics under the CEP and the Conference of European Statisticians, we would ask for further details on the scope and the timeframe of the initiative, of this initiative. It is important to clarify how the mandate of this additional body is going to support and not duplicate the activities currently implemented under the Joint Task Force umbrella. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Lukas. Listening to you, I remember to ask you, all those of you that have statements, please send them to the secretariat because this will make our life much easier for recording in the minutes and so on. Martin, I will give you another floor, Switzerland.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Switzerland welcomes the progress made by WGMA and the task force so far and will continue to provide full support to UNEC work in the field of environment monitoring and assessment. Therefore, we endorse an extension of the mandate and terms of reference of WGMA and the Joint Task Force until the end of 2023 to allow the two bodies to present new draft mandates and term of reference after the EFE Environment for Europe Ministerial Conference here in Nikosi. We would like to point in particular the importance of relabel, up-to-date and quality data to address current and emerging needs and challenges as well as addressing any remaining gaps, including the full implementation of the guidelines for the application of the UNEC environmental indicators. The continuation of the support for implementation and operation of the Shared Environmental Information System, SICE, in Europe and Central Asia. I remember our meeting, I think it was in Belgrade, as we spoke about SICE. I was not really aware what does it mean, it was quite technical, and now we can see that we achieved a lot thanks to this system. So, we should continue to enhance our work in this direction. And also the need to keep the pan-European environment under regular review in support of sustainable transition. And in this regard, I think that this document put together, I think at the end by Nick Bonvois, is very relevant, very interesting, and I think we should have a look and our minister also before the meeting tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Martin. I, I think we started discussing size in Astana. And then we spent two or three weeks discussing what was size, what was this concept, this new concept. And I, I very much agree that UNEC with partner organizations did an extremely valuable work in, in expanding the implementation of size in the, in the pan-European region. I think, I think that it would be useful if we had more, if we received more information on this consultations, on the possible establishment of a standing body on environmental statistics from colleagues. So, this is, as far as I understand, it is being discussed, but it has never been discussed in the committee. So, I was wondering where is it being discussed? Perhaps we could know more? I, I heard, well, from the EU that there is a need for further information on this. Perhaps colleagues from the secretariat, today not on editing proposals, but perhaps you could provide us all more information on this discussions. I'll give you the floor, Nick Bonvois.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to, yeah, give a little bit of background. So, the Joint Task Force was established in 2009 with an initial mandate of about eighteen months. And that is the normal practice for a, a task force or a team of specialists, as they are often called in UNEC terms. And there are actually guidelines on the establishment and functioning of teams of specialists, which indeed foresee that they usually live for about two years. Thirteen years later, we can see that the, the work of the Joint Task Force is still very relevant and indeed there are very many new challenges coming up. And we will talk about this in the next few days, quite a lot about sustainable infrastructure, about circular economy. These are quite complex areas which countries wish to discuss and share experiences on. So, that is why we are looking to establish a, a body which is, got a longer standing. Again, there are guidelines from the Executive Committee on what are called working parties, but sometimes they're not working parties, they're working groups or expert groups. And these still require a review of the terms of reference every five years. So, even if we refer to it as a standing body, it is, it is actually still under review. And this would be a replacement for the Joint Task Force. So, it would be an elevation in its status. But it would not result in any duplication because it would replace the Joint Task Force. We would see that if this is what member states wants, is that we would have a, a body which is more welcoming to all member states in the region, whereas the Joint Task Force had a particular focus on countries with economies in transition. And this also affects a certain, to a degree, the reality of the work of the Joint Task Force. We have a next meeting at beginning of November, so people are still registering, but we can see that we have other states from within our region which are registered, Austria, Luxembourg, Spain and Switzerland, and European Commission which are registered for the next meeting. And we also have some countries from outside our region which are registering government experts. And that also reflects the situation with the Conference of European Statisticians, which has a broader geographical area, in fact, than Europe. The, being a joint group of experts or a joint working group or working party would also give the members of that group the opportunity to review the work of what are really time-limited task forces under the Conference of European Statisticians, which have been working on things like climate change statistics, waste statistics, and could, they have an interest also in looking at other areas. They have already been looking a bit at circular economy as well. So, there would be a, a stronger role for such a body, a stronger position for such a body as well. There is one other thing, of course, which is very important, which is resources in terms of, of course, we would like to see more resources to this area, but that's maybe a separate discussion. In terms of the implications on the budget, so far, the Joint Task Forces had English and Russian translation and interpretation. And that has been a decision by, by the Committee on Environmental Policy not to include French. But in fact, we, we don't get credit. It is already budgeted in. And it has just been a, a practical approach, but we haven't been asking for French interpretation and translation. Which could be posed once again if the committee wishes to consider replacing the Joint Task Force by a, a standing body. I think that's, I, well, the timeline, yes, thank you. I can't survive without Christine. So, the timeline, the Joint Task Force, as I said, will meet in, in, in November and will discuss further the, the ideas about the, the terms of reference. And of course, the intention is then to put a proposal before the Committee on Environmental Policy next November, November 2023. And as I said, it's, normally it is a five-year review, but sometimes the committee might decide to review first after a couple of years to see how things are going and see if any adjustments are necessary. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nick. So, I find this too well, this standing body would not replace the two, meaning the Joint Task Force and WGMA. It would only replace the Joint Task Force. So, your proposal, or what you are considering and discussing probably internally is that WGMA will go on? Okay. I'm not sure whether colleagues wish to or not to ask for further clarification? Does not seem to be the case. I, well, from my side reacting, I, I understand that, I understand the point that a standing body would be given more attention, even internally, that point I understand. I always have this concern that when, it's, it's not difficult to create bodies, but it's impossible to abolish them. Even when they are temporary, you see, we are not able to abolish. So, but the, the main issues, whether or not they are relevant, that should be the main issue. And being relevant, if it makes sense that they are temporary, or if it makes sense that they are standing bodies, I think that all delegations need to consider this. Because there are different perspectives that can be taken into consideration. And what I would wish is that this discussion returns again to the CEP with more, with more information so that delegations can further consider and take decisions on this. We have one year and two months or one month. So, at the next session, we will discuss this issue again. So, if there are no further interventions from colleagues? So, the decisions, I think they are clear. We will extend, we will ask EXCOM to approve the extension of the mandate of the two groups, WGMA and Joint Task Force. And we will wait until the next CP session where we will get more information and probably have a more in-depth discussion of this proposal to, to replace the Joint Task Force by a standing, standing body. Of course, resources have to be taken into consideration for this. So I will now close this agenda item, Agenda Item Four, and we'll open Agenda Item Five, which is also a regular item we have always in our agendas, which is the Annual Program of Work of the Environment Subprogram for 2023 and the outline of key components of the Program of Work of the Environment Subprogram for 2024. The Program of Work of the Environment Subprogram for 2023, you can find in ece/cep/s/2022/10. And this program, of course, is based on the ECE Proposed Program Budget for 2023. The outline of key components of the Program of Work of the Environment Subprogram for 2024, you can find in Information Paper Number Eighteen. I would like to invite the committee to adopt a draft annual program of work for the Environment Subprogram for 2023 and recommend that is that it to be approved by the Executive Committee. Again, this is a document that is approved by the Executive Committee by EXCOM. And I would also invite the committee to consider the outline of key components of the Program of Work of the Environment Subprogram for 2024. But if there are any recommendations to these outlines, if you wish to intervene, I would give you the floor now for both documents. And we we have a request from the EU, European Union. Lukas.
Madam Chair, thank you. The EU and its member states appreciate the presented draft program of work of the Environment Subprogram for 2023, which contributes to the achievement of the Sustainable Development Goals and welcome the reached objectives. The EU and its member states would like to assure the secretariat of our recommendation that the program be approved by the Executive Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lukas. Any further requests from the floor? Switzerland, Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Switzerland thanks the secretariat for the preparation of this document, and we agree with the proposed program plans in the Part Three Result Area, in the three result area. Result Three, Strengthen industrial safety governance in Eastern and Southeastern Europe, the Caucasus and Central Asia is welcome, especially because the Central Asia countries except Kazakhstan have not yet partied to the UNEC conventions on transpondery effect of industrial accident. Nonetheless, the Convention Assistance and Cooperation Program also benefits non-parties whose of Central Asia and Georgia in particular, which are countries dear to Switzerland. We do therefore support the planned national policy dialogue to be sustained and implemented by these countries in 2023. Result One, enhance environmental performance in the UNEC. And Result Three, improve information from strengthening transpondery water cooperation, which are ongoing since 2022, also receive the full support of Switzerland for next year. Outline of key components of the Program of Work of the Environmental Subprogram for 2024. We agree with the outline, noting that it in full continuation with the Program of Work of 2023. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Martin. Are there any further requests from colleagues? The Russian Federation, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Due to the fact that Russia was blocked from participating in the in the Ninth Ministerial Conference, we are against of inclusion those provisions of the Program of Work that are aimed at achieving the outcomes of the Ninth Ministerial Conference. Thank you.
Thank you, Russian Federation. Can I just ask you for clarification? You're referring to the program for 2023, right?
That's right, that's right.
The Russian Federation, I would like to ask you if you would agree to put a reference into the program expressing explicitly that you oppose these components, specific components? Because the the CEP does not approve this. CEP transmits this to the EXCOM.
Yes, Madam Chair, I understand that that the goal was just to announce our position without putting any reference.
Okay, thank you very much. So you will be recorded in the minutes of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. So thank you, colleagues. We will transmit these documents to EXCOM, especially the Program of Work. As you know, it's EXCOM that is supposed to approve it. They have the prerogative approving it. We will record the 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 position of the Russian Federation in reference to the specific outcomes included in the Program of Work in the the minutes of the meeting. Thank you very much. And now I will close this agenda item. As you know, we still have to go back to Agenda Item Two on the Ninth Environment for European Conference, both the conference agenda and the ministerial declaration. So I would perhaps start with the conference agenda. And this this, we included this agenda subitem, this item in the agenda to allow the committee to consider any last-minute organizational issues related to the conference agenda and the organization of work that might arise. The, so the delegate, I would like to ask if delegations, as to any in terms of requests for clarification, if in regarding the agenda of the conference. Okay, so I will give the floor now to our colleague Zal from the secretariat.
Good afternoon. It's just to remind that the list of speakers, which might be of your interest, of the committee, of course, is uploaded on the website of the UNEC website of the conference. It is in the addendum to the Organization of Work document. The Organization of Work document is known to you, and its addendum contains now the list of speakers at the conference, which were announced to us. You remember that we asked to express the interest in having during the conference the interventions. So we got quite a lot, and you can see the list of speakers. And the disclaimer is that it is, the list is as it was yesterday, of course, and it is changing practically every day because of some changes in the delegations. I think it's by default. Just to announce that this is additional information for you. As for the agenda of the conference, this is not, it has not been changed. The sequence of the agenda items is still the same, so there is nothing to to add practically. But there will be, of course, some opening ceremonies, which at that moment when we had this Organization of Work document, we are not clear how they will go. Today, we know more, but you will see tomorrow. The main point is that the delegations will be asked to take seats around nine fifteen. And then at nine thirty, the opening show will start, and after that, the conference will will go on. Just a practical information for you. If there are any particular questions, we will try to respond to them, or if we will not be able, we will check with our hosts and respond to you maybe later today. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the additional information. Are there any questions? Okay, so it does not seem to be the case. Thank you very much. So what I suggest we do is that we, I announced yesterday that today at four PM we would have the voting of the declaration. It's not yet four, so let's make a short break and let's be here two or three minutes before four, okay? Please, sharp. Please, sharp. Thank you. So colleagues, can I ask you to take your seats, please?
Do you check outside?
Yes. So, thank you. Can I? Can I ask you to take your seats, please? The host, the host country has received us very warmly. But I think next time I will ask the host country not to provide food and beverages outside the meeting room. Because it is no food, no coffee, no, no nothing.
It's not anymore there.
I know, there's nothing there. So as agreed yesterday and following the request by the distinguished colleague from the Russian Federation, we will have a vote on the ministerial declaration. We have received thirty-five notes verbal. As you know, delegations can only vote if they have sent the note verbal. And we received thirty-five. Delegations have only one vote. And the text we are going to vote on is the text that we circulated yesterday. It was sent to all registered participants yesterday evening by the secretariat. As you know, C E P does not approve or adopt the declaration. C E P agrees to transmit it to the ministerial conference. So what I propose, and which is in accordance with the rules of procedure of the commission, is to vote by show of hands. And I will ask three questions. First one is who is in favor of transmitting the text of the ministerial declaration to the ministerial conference? And then those of you that are in favor, you show your hands and we will count. Who opposes to transmit the text of the declaration? And the third is who abstains? And then we will record, we will count and see what the result is. And in terms of result, to approve the transmission of the ministerial declaration, we need a simple majority of those that are present and voting. Is this clear for everyone? So shall we do it? Okay, I will start. So one vote for delegation. And give us time to to count, okay? So I will start with the first question. Who is in favor of transmitting the test, the text of the declaration circulated yesterday to the ministerial conference? Those of you that are in favor, please show your hands. And now wait so that we can count.
Twenty-six. Twenty-six in favor.
Thank you very much. Who opposes to transmit the text of the ministerial declaration circulated yesterday to the ministerial conference?
One. One against.
Thank you very much. And now the third question. Who abstains to transmit the declaration to the ministerial conference?
One. All right.
Thank you very much. So I conclude that we have a majority in favor of delegations present and voting in favor of transmitting the ministerial declaration to the ministerial conference. Thank you very much for the vote. It will be recorded in the minutes. So it will be transmitted and the ministerial conference will start tomorrow. Although not easy, this process, we've ended up with the approval to transmit by the CEP with a majority of delegations voting in favor of transmitting the ministerial declaration. Thank you very much for your efforts. The Russian delegation, you want the floor, I will give you the floor, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to make a comment in Russian language, so colleagues, dear colleagues, please use the device.
Russian Federation subsequently stood up for the strengthening of the European Economic Commission (EUC) as a crucial bridge for the discussion of the broader range of issues of social and economic development. I would like to remind you that during the 2011-2012 survey of reform of the EUC countries of the European Union, they put maximum effort into loosening the political importance of the EU in determining priorities and routes of development of the European Economic Cooperation. Exactly because of the active participation of the Russian side, it was possible to preserve the core program of the EUC without allowing the European Union to turn the EUC into a technical agency for the development and distribution of European standards in the European region, which, as we know, is wider than the Euroministerial Council. It refers to the European region. Year by year, countries of the European Union, during the work of the Fifth Committee, try to shorten the budgetary and budgetary resources of the EUC. And until the moment, exactly the Russian side led these attempts. With regret, we point out that the practice of entering the EU in the practice of making important decisions does not correspond to the principles of the EU. The EUC could not maintain the privilege of the principles of neutrality and neutrality. The result of such destructive actions could be the loss of the role of the EU in the EUC as an instrument of de-politicization of dialogue about the social and economic cooperation of all countries and regions. At the end, I would like to thank the Armenian delegation for their contribution in the voting. And, honored Lady President, we ask that all appearances of the Russian delegation be reflected in the final settlement of the work of the EUC Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Russian Federation. They will be recorded in the minutes, I can assure you. I would like now to close Agenda Item 2B, which is on the preparations for the ministerial conference. And we move to Agenda Item 6, Other Business. And I would like to ask delegations whether there are any other business you would like to discuss and issue you would like to raise. Well, it does not seem to be the case. So what do we need to do? Before the closure of the meeting, as you know, we project the decisions taken at the meeting. And for that, we need some time just to prepare the final list of decisions. I know that some of you are not active or usual normal participants to the CEP, but this is common practice, so we prepare the list of decisions and then delegates have the opportunity to see projected on screen the list of decisions. We think that this is a very efficient way and we have worked like this in the more recent years. And in my point of view, it's a way of having the decisions taken, circulating, everyone knows what has been decided and what is the follow-up of the work of the committee. So I would like to ask you, I know that there is no longer coffee or drinks or food outside. It was not, I said it was not needed, but perhaps. But I would like to ask you to give us until four thirty, I think. Just let me just check with the secretary. Okay, so twenty minutes is enough, so let's, let's restart at four thirty, okay? Please be in the room at four thirty. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
So colleagues, can I ask you to take your seats please?
Shall we try to conclude our work?
So item seven, closure of the meeting. We are going to project the decisions taken, the summary of decisions taken on the screen. So the Committee on Environmental Policy adopts the agenda of its special session, decides to transmit the draft ministerial declaration as amended during the session to the Nikosia Conference for adoption, adopts the recommendations contained in the second Environmental Performance Review of Armenia, information paper number fifteen, adopts the recommendations contained in the third EPR of Azerbaijan, information paper number sixteen, agrees to postpone the adoption of recommendations of the third EPR of Kyrgyzstan to its next session, while taking note of the commitment of Kyrgyzstan to provide to the UNEC Secretariat comments to the draft EPR recommendations, which you find in the information paper number seventeen, underpin by complete and accurate information at the latest by the end of 2022. Invites the UNEC Secretariat to assess the comments received from Kyrgyzstan and proceed with the necessary actions to finalize the recommendations of the country's EPR for consideration by the Expert Group on EPRs as needed and the Committee. The actions will be subject to the availability of financial resources and the continued commitment of Kyrgyzstan, including participation in person in the meeting of the Expert Group on EPRs. Expresses sincere appreciation for the work of the ECE Expert Group on EPRs, adopts the mandate and terms of reference of the Expert Group on EPRs for 2023-2026 and requests the ECE Secretariat to submit it to the ECE Executive Committee for approval. Welcomes the information provided on activities of the EPR program and expresses its appreciation to the Secretariat for the excellent work in support of the program. Welcomes the start of the EPR of Mauritania. Welcomes the next EPRs to be conducted, the fourth EPRs of Tajikistan, Montenegro and the Republic of Moldova. Takes note of activities to prepare for the fourth cycle of EPRs under the ECE EPR program. Invites the Expert Group on EPRs to prepare additional guidance on the conduct of the fourth cycle of EPRs for the consideration of CEP at its twenty-eighth session in November 2023. Takes note of the information provided by the Secretariat on resource mobilization for the ECE EPR program in 2021-2022 and in particular thanks Austria, Germany, Switzerland for their financial support, France, Germany, Hungary, Italy and Portugal for providing expertise, UNEP for providing expertise, United Nations country teams and UNDP for substantive and logistical support. Estonia, Georgia, Germany, Hungary, Italy, Montenegro, Romania, Switzerland and UNEP for having delegated their experts to serve in and support the Expert Group on EPRs. Invites members of the Committee to nominate their representatives to the Expert Group on EPRs. Encourages delegations to provide in kind expert and financial support to the ECE EPR program. Appreciates the close cooperation of DC Environment Statistical and Sustainable Energy Divisions and Sustainable Development and Gender Unit and United Nations country teams with the EPR program. Decides to extend mandates in terms of reference of the Working Group on Environmental Monitoring and Assessment and the Joint Task Force on Environmental Statistics and Indicators until end 2023 to allow the Working Group and the Joint Task Force to present new draft mandates in terms of reference after the next Environment for Europe Ministerial Conference to the Committee and in the case of the Joint Task Force, the Conference of European Statisticians, and requests the Secretary to submit this decision on extension, these, I think we should have plural, these decisions on extension to the ECE Executive Committee for approval. Takes note of the proposal made to convert the Joint Task Force into a standing body and decides to have in-depth discussion based on detailed information provided by the Secretariat at the next regular session of the Committee in November 2023. Adoptes the draft program of work of the Environment Subprogram for 2023 and recommends that it be approved by the Executive Committee. Takes note of the outline of key components of the program of work of the Environment Subprogram for 2024 as contained in information paper number eighteen. Agrees to hold its next regular session in Geneva, to be held on one to the first to the third November 2023. Expresses gratitude to the Government of Cyprus for its hospitality and hosting the Committee's special session in Nikosia. Requests the Bureau and the Secretariat to follow up on the Committee's decisions, including by preparing the documents and reports necessary for the Committee's work at its next regular session. Expresses gratitude for the work of the interpreters and the technical team in servicing the current meeting. And finally expresses also its appreciation, strong appreciation to the Secretariat for servicing the work of the meeting. So if there are no requests from the floor, does not seem to be the case, we will follow common practice, which is you will receive this list of decisions by email in the coming days and then everything will be included, all the statements, all we had here from delegations will be included in the minutes of the meeting that you will receive as soon as the report is prepared. So I think it is now time to close the meeting. I want to thank very much all delegations, all delegates present here and I want also to thank very much Cyprus for hosting us, thank you very much. Beautiful room, all the proper conditions, wonderful food, very warm hospitality, thank you very much for being here, for being so constructive, for being so polite. I think this was not exactly the session I thought we would have in the run-up to the conference, but it's what we were able to have, so for sure in the future it will be different. Thank you, I hope to see you in next sessions. It was a pleasure, an honor to be here and we will meet in November for sure, 2023, so in one year, one year and one month, thank you and enjoy Cyprus, thank you, bye bye.
Sources and the continued commitment of Kyrgyzstan, including participation in person in the meeting of the Expert Group on EPRs. Exposes sincere appreciation for the work of the ECE Expert Group on EPRs, adopts the mandate and terms of reference of the Expert Group on EPRs for 2023-2026, and requests the ECE Secretariat to submit it to the ECE Executive Committee for approval. Welcomes the information provided on activities of the EPR programme and expresses its appreciation to the Secretariat for excellent work in support of the programme. Welcomes the start of the EPR of Mauritania. Welcomes the next EPRs to be conducted, the fourth EPRs of Tajikistan, Montenegro and the Republic of Moldova. Takes note of activities to prepare for the fourth cycle of EPRs under the EPR programme. Invites the Expert Group on EPRs to prepare additional guidance on the conduct of the fourth cycle of EPRs for the consideration of CEP at its 28th session in November 2023. Takes note of the information provided by the Secretariat on resource mobilisation for the EPR programme in 2021-2022 and in particular thanks Austria, Germany, Switzerland for their financial support, France, Germany, Hungary, Italy and Portugal for providing expertise, UNEP for providing expertise, United Nations country teams and UNDP for substantive and logistical support. Estonia, Georgia, Germany, Hungary, Italy, Montenegro, Romania, Switzerland and UNEP for having delegated their experts to serve in and support the Expert Group on EPRs. Invite members of the committee to nominate their representatives to the Expert Group on EPRs. Encourages delegations to provide in kind expert and financial support to the EPR programme. Appreciates the close cooperation of the E environment statistical and sustainable energy divisions and sustainable development and gender unit and United Nations country teams with the EPR programme. Decides to extend mandates in terms of reference of the Working Group on Environmental Monitoring and Assessment and the Joint Task Force on Environmental Statistics and Indicators until end 2023 to allow the Working Group and the Joint Task Force to present new draft mandates in terms of reference after the next Environment for Europe Ministerial Conference to the committee and in the case of the Joint Task Force, the Conference of European Statisticians, and requests the Secretary to submit this decision on extension, these, I think we should have plural, these decisions on extension to the ECE Executive Committee for approval. Takes note of the proposal made to convert the Joint Task Force into a standing body and decides to have in-depth discussion based on detailed information provided by the Secretariat at the next regular session of the committee in November 2023. Adoptes the draft programme of work of the Environment Programme for 2023 and recommends that it be approved by the Executive Committee. Takes note of the outline of key components of the programme of work of the Environment Programme for 2024 as contained in Information Paper Number 18. Agrees to hold its next regular session in Geneva, to be held on 1 to the 1st to the 3rd November 2023. Exposes gratitude to the government of Cyprus for its hospitality and hosting the committee's special session in Ecosia. Requests the Bureau and the Secretariat to follow up on the committee's decisions, including by preparing the documents and reports necessary for the committee's work at its next regular session. Exposes gratitude for the work of the interpreters and the technical team in servicing the current meeting. And finally expresses also its appreciation, strong appreciation to the Secretariat for servicing the work of the meeting. So if there are no requests from the floor, does not seem to be the case, we will follow common practice, which is you will receive this list of decisions by email in the coming days. And then everything will be included, all the statements, all we had here from delegations will be included in the minutes of the meeting that you will receive as soon as the report is prepared. So I think it is now time to close the meeting. I want to thank very much all delegations, all delegates present here. And I want also to thank very much Cyprus for hosting us. Thank you very much. Beautiful room, all the proper conditions, wonderful food, very warm hospitality. Thank you very much for being here, for being so constructive, for being so polite. I think this was not exactly the session I thought we would have in the run-up to the conference, but it's what we were able to have. So for sure in the future it will be different. Thank you. I hope, I hope to see you in next sessions. It was a pleasure, an honour to be here. And we will meet in November for sure, 2023. So in one year, one year and one month. Thank you and enjoy Cyprus. Thank you. Bye bye.